I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any additions or corrections to the minutes of our September 14 meeting? Is there a motion to approve the minutes and today's agenda? Is there a second? Is there a poll? All in favor signify the same. Motion carries. Is there any public comment from anyone? All's quiet on the home front. Dean, we have a few minutes before Dylan gets here. See, Don printed off our Thompson Mechanical. Couple of concerns that I have is how this ties in with an off-peak heating, the off-peak heating program. The Otter Tail was advocating that. And then how we would fit a supply tank, propane supply tank on the property. What's the gentleman's name? Is it Brad? What's the gentleman's name?
Oh, Brad Nelson.
Brad Nelson.
From Otter Tail?
Yeah. Think he'd be willing to...
Do you want me to...
Keep a look at it?
I can email it to him.
Would ya?
Yeah. You want me to do that?
Yeah.
Ask them if it is... I don't think it comes close to what they were recommending.
Okay. Alright, I'll do that. I'll email that to him and then maybe he can visit with you guys next week.
Maybe we can get Otter Tail's proposal to Thompson Mechanical and say it's true.
I know it's been having a hard time getting people to come...
I know, I'm not contacting them. We're supposed to be the back end, but they didn't come.
CDJ said one, maybe three years away.
Well, I think, well, you know, if we don't get on their schedule, it's gonna be one or two more years. So get us out. Get us out. We're never getting out of it.
Did you want to keep yours?
I think we can. I got my email and I'm seeing if we can keep it a little further.
Seeing as you go down, so part of the taxes or the fire department?
No, that's not taxes. That's a check that we get right from the fire marshal. You get a check and we have to portion it up to all the fire departments in our, according to the valuations of their districts.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
I think I have it.
It's through the fire insurance and so we, counties get a check once a year. And we usually get it like earlier, but until we have all of our evaluations completed with our utilities, we don't portion it until at that time.
Pretty good amount, actually. Yep.
We're just a pass-through messenger. I got a email back from Wellmar. She said, "The base rate change for further group in January is 5%. So start off with that. For the risk and underwriting considerations, it will depend on where your claims were in the last two years. And in the last renewal year, the claims were nearly a million dollars, which was up from the year before. That million dollars in claims will still appear on this renewal. But if the current year is better, that'll be better for the group. If there are a lot of changes in the census, that can cause some fluctuation, but everyone will get another year, which will cause an increase. If the other changes offset, it will be good for the group." Our renewals will be out the first of October. So in our budgets, we figure 15% increase like we always do.
But we, this last year, we had had...
We've had...
A major...
Yeah, a major one, so anyway.
So we can look forward to higher than 5% now.
I don't think so. Oh, yeah. But like I said, we did budget 15%, we always do that. It's better to have...
Okay, okay then.
So...
Mr. Tuchschmeier. So far, so good.
Okay, I'll keep that going. I don't have anything. Ruin your morning, so.
Well, that's good.
So for one thing, Dylan and I talked about the application for the permit.
Yeah.
And then I got ahold of Todd at First District. And they're gonna be sending something out. So that, the permit thing that I gave you, the application last week, that's going to start, that one's going to start down in the assessor's office or in the planning office. Because that's pretty much for them to get the building and all of that. And then there's going to be another one for the county. So it's forthcoming yet and nobody, if anybody came in right now, they can't apply anywhere.
But I still, I don't like this one. I think Sherry, if it's... She's gonna be using, it has to comply with our ordinance and it doesn't contain the information that's needed.
That's correct. But they're gonna be sending out, what I'm saying is, First District's going to be sending out two new ones. Luke will be sending that.
One for planning and then one for county.
Right, but it's still should have the right information and so forth.
Well, and once we get the, once we get them first planning, we'll look at them at that time and see if we need to tweak anything, because those will be the forms that they're sending out to all the counties.
As I read the other... Maybe I'm not right on this or whatever, but our ordinance only pertaining to cannabis dispensary.
Yeah, and that's what I told Todd. But it's still in our ordinance because that's the definitions. That's what's confusing to me.
Right, but proposed establishment type, we're only gonna allow the dispensary. We're not allowing the qualification facility, manufacturing, processing, and so forth. That to me shouldn't even be, or a testing facility shouldn't even be on this application. So, yeah, there's issues. Okay, alright.
No drawers, no labs.
You guys have any questions for this one? Table, table. Been a year ever. We're on track to get 1,000-plus classroom misdemeanor filings this year. For the first time ever, I believe, the highest we've had prior is like 800 and something. And I'm gonna cross that out.
Are you getting any feedback on your graduates or a deputy?
I've got the advertisement out there.
So far?
It has about very long.
Sure.
Haven't had too much yet, but that I'm hoping it'll pick up. And I plan on, I haven't yet, I plan on submitting the advertisement to the State Bar Newsletter, to UNEA, and Mitchell County, so I feel.
Sure.
Little conceit.
Sure.
If there's any interest outside of USD.
Sounds good. Good luck.
Not anything else, I will talk to you guys next week.
Dylan, thank you.
I get this job today?
Yes.
They do.
Too thankful it wasn't last week when we had tons of that stuff.
Alright. How do you even change this?
There you go.
And then he just doesn't come here? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yep, yes.
Okay.
We have an invitation to attend the NDEAM celebration, National Disability Employment Awareness Month, coming up October 7.
I just got my stat mail this morning.
Okay.
How long have we had our guests been out in jail?
A long time and we've tried to get the names changed.
But my question is this, I'm seeing too many Phillips. Sistin, 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 sistin. Those whole page.
Right in tone?
Yes, other than one, is Summit. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13. 13 times on the first page.
What was the date on most page?
August. I mean, we're looking at over $2,000 in gas.
It's a lot cheaper.
Does this come through Taylor's office or does it come directly to us?
It comes directly to us.
But isn't it signed off at...
It is, I'm not seeing it.
Yeah, I guess I don't... So the given time of the day.
Yeah, but they had access to that 24-hour.
Yeah, I just wondered what time of the day. I mean, it's a lot cheaper.
Well, we got two purchases here, one for $725 and one for $755. I don't understand what that... It'd be Summit, but the, they go over there and he charges to fill our tank in Summit? This one, this one is 109 East Dickory. So $755. Yeah, how is, how do you buy 205 gallons?
Is it a summary though, I think, for the month, or for that billing period?
Sure doesn't, sure doesn't look like it to me. Looks like a single purchase.
Yeah, but if you grow the coffee cup, you put it in there and it kicks it. You said it was in Summit, right?
One in Summit, one in tone here.
Number of transactions, 25 at Summit, or 72, 33.
That summarizes the following pages then? Is that what it does?
And then 26 times to Sistin. Yeah, yeah, because of number of transactions.
Okay.
As I showed you, 1/2 gallon.
Let's see here.
It's interesting what our opinion and what are the differences, how much...
Quite different.
How much is different, yeah.
3.049.
2.5. 73, but we have like 2... What was it, Mark? 3, 270? 279 and something. 279, that's what I'm saying. 25 cents.
From 309?
2.5.
Oh, 3.5, okay, so 25...
25 cents.
And how many gallons?
Oh, you'd have to...
Just the Sistin one.
On that summary page?
Just the Sistin one.
So... I think I just hit the, is 205. 50?
$50, it's $50.
To not be using it.
Oh, okay. Wait, that here is out on the body, right?
Right. It's not...
Patrick, come in here, just.
Yeah, I was gonna text him.
What'd you guys think of the job?
Well, you guys have thought about the budgets. You're gonna have to decide today if we wanna tweak those budgets or... Or tweak. You know, you're gonna...
I think maybe with Don gone, then maybe wait till next week.
But we have to do the final next week, so how long are we going to have everything prepared? If we have to do the final next week? Because we have to go in and change the budgets.
Okay, so it will be two departments, basically?
Public defender.
Public defender department and planning is own.
Thank you.
And then if you guys are going to do anything on wages, we are...
You already have, you already have the quarter?
I did a quarter.
That's all you have, whatever. Yeah, no, we've had a surplus agenda.
Yes. Yes. And our, our, um... Our total taxes, our county growth plus the CPI. The CPI is 1.2%, growth is 1.29%, or 2.49%. So we will have an increase of $90,000 in taxes.
How much?
$90,000.
For sure.
What'd you say CPI was?
1.2.
Growth was 1.29.
Sure not very much, is it?
No, it's not.
Other categories, talking about this, maybe about employees and stuff, the executive section, or is it... Unless it's about a specific employee.
I do, I do have one employee or ex-employee that I need to talk about.
You have a executive section? Make a motion.
Motion by Miguel for executive section to discuss personnel. Second, by example, all in favor signify the same.
Aye.
I guess we just didn't do how I wanted. I mean, to sign the resolution, oh.
Yes, resolution.
No, it's a certification.
They'll prove it by...
Yeah. And adopt.
And adopt. So...
To stop that certification. Chairman, certification form adopted resolution. So it's just made motion to do the resolution.
Yes. Oh, yes. Yeah.
I had to...
Yep.
Yeah, that authorization for that bridge stuff. That bridge stuff there. That bad stuff.
You've got that.
That all the guy who's... How much it is and what other bridge it is and... Yeah. The top is inside.
And then we...
Well, I don't know here, but there's... There's down.
He passed me. I'm always...
It's all mission, not his own.
Okay. People think that's... And you'll be... You what? People are gonna have... This part? Can I help right here?
It's service stuff.
Shat on that location.
I know. Everything on the... Water supply. Check part.
Policy.
And like money next week start on it. This will...
Going much more on the...
So it's really money on that south. And you're approaching other that they're...
They did that?
See, I was bad, I always come over and do it. I'm talking to me and I told him, he called me. But it was fine as long as they ain't got lawyers. So that's one thing I'll be looking at.
Uh, eighteen, you got a beautiful passion. Eighteen down the way that bridge was, yeah.
Yeah, I helped go over that with a five can. I might have to lay it down in the back there. See, and that bridge, you know, on there?
Yeah.
It's where it's humped up. It's got a space in there in between, see? And all the nets are falling there. So we have to cover that. I don't know what they had there, you know, when they did that bridge. It was been like that, you know, for a while.
You'll be just asking there.
We're gonna have to put some ground down, like, you know.
You want to know, done, frozen cold, and I said...
We didn't know, was by half, all the way by eighteen and eleven, that's all.
I seen eleven there, the whole place.
Eighteen, the one they did, section one, to the first mile on eighteen. So that's done. Oh, that's... Yeah. What by when they were doing it, it wasn't too high down?
Thank you, Pat. You guys, so...
I took a drive through Seegi Hall of the other day.
Oh, yeah?
You can tell your guys that they did a way better job than the contractor did.
Oh, really? I didn't drive in front of the best my stuff, I guess.
Yeah.
They got a fox seal.
Yeah, the fox seal. You got... You got our expenses ready to go?
Except for the fox seal, having sent the bill.
But I mean, our expenses, our own?
Yeah. I don't have it here because I was late from the second bill and then the fox seal. Then I connected to all bill, so... The point was. And it gets fox seal last, what was it, the last week? Thursday?
It looked...
Wednesday or Thursday, the fox seal. You know, I was hoping to have that more, but Thomas was understanding.
They're getting there. Yeah, they're getting there. I see the mower...
Coming up, but I mean, we were gonna mow that before he fox sealed it. But we couldn't get Joy up there. The same day I told him, want to get it, they were gonna fox seal it.
Some of it had been mowed.
Yeah.
Looked like they had gone over it once already, but...
Thomas came around earlier and did this on his side. And then Joy was on the drawl with the other new ones, but he was gonna be up there like... That's three or four days, he wasn't coming back there.
Almost looks like you should get up there and spray to kill that, man. It's really... It's really creeping in on the road there.
Yeah, it's creeping in since the last few years because we haven't been no shoulder working on that road. So it's pretty rough.
Yeah, it's really, really creeping in.
Okay, I guess the first thing I got is, um... Need to, um, have a motion to, um... Authorize the chairman to sign the certification form or adopt the resolution for a five-year plan to approve that. And Don has the paperwork?
Got it right here. She's... Judy on the spot, so...
Yeah, she had an updated dates on there where I can, so...
We'll need a motion for authorization for me to sign that. The bridge improvement. By example, second. By Johnson, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All right. Motion carries.
And then we did do the approval five-year plan last time, right, Don? So the five-year bill, we did it that day. So that probably... So I think that's all we did for the bridge plan, right?
Yep, and then I'll just send everything in?
Yep.
To the first planning district.
And then first planning will just get the rest of it in and then, um... Comes all the minutes from the last meeting, all that's done, and we should be able to button it up. And the first district should be able to send it back to us.
Yeah.
Complete, um...
Yeah.
Forms and stuff. So with that, um... Next thing I have was, uh... We have a... Received a grant for a PE for another bridge. And the bridge is just south of Clear City and then to the east on the township road. That one there and the one in Russell. West, east of Russell was the two that I'm hoping to get the low funding. That money that they're coming later with. That was the low funding, about six percent interest. I'm hoping to, when it's time to construct it, you know, I'm hoping we'll get that money. But right now, the PE money, the ground money that we were accepted for, this was $37,400. And so the state will pay eighty percent, we'll pay twenty on that. So... And the bridge number is five five zero seven one dash zero seven. So like I said, it's right up here. We just put in for that one PE for this year, this next year, we did that. We did that in August, so...
Will that be good with culverts?
Nope, that's definitely a box culvert. That would be replaced, hopefully.
Okay.
We will get done, the hydraulics will get done with this approval date. And then when we have a T S C L meeting, what we call it, before we do... Once the PE is done and all that, when their engineering is done, the hydraulics are done, then... Then we go off, the state gets everything, then we go have a meeting, and then once we get that far, that's when we decide what the structure's gonna be. And usually that's, you know, later on, so... But it will be a box culvert.
Or they...
It won't be no culverts or anything. So we need a motion to just have the chairman sign that, and then Don will send it to that state.
Um, come back in a second. You said approval of five-year plan?
Yes.
We didn't do that. I'm wondering if that had a minutes of September seventh. We discussed it after discussion, motion by example, second by Johnson, to set approval date of the plan on September twenty-third.
Okay, so then if you should have a motion to...
Okay, one more motion for approval of five-year plan.
Yeah, it is on our agenda.
I didn't know if it was in the minutes that are ready.
Yeah, we just set today as the approval.
That's perfect. So then we need to, before we move on to that motion for the bridge, let me say, um...
But that was presented two weeks ago.
It was presented two weeks ago. When we did the public meeting, when I saw it, I was here.
Right, right.
Yeah.
All right, is there a motion to approve that plan? Example, second, by Vergel, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Uh, I'll need a mo... Motion for authorization for signature to accept the... To accept the grant of $37,400 from the Department of Transportation for bridge replacement. By Vergel, second. By Johnson, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Sorry.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Twenty seconds.
Tim?
Tim, which motion?
The one on the range.
And the one, and which motion?
Preliminary.
Oh, I... I made the motion, face it.
Okay. I need the section of registration for...
I should have an update, um, for what we call the bridge dump out with the track. I didn't get a chance to talk to him, so I don't know how that's coming with, um, getting for construction. So I hope that's... So, um, we're getting into the end of the vlog, getting sidetracked, now I'm at something. You had that, then I've done it in dormer, so I don't have any days to order, but... Yeah. So with that, that's all I have to do in general, so... I imagine authorization for five-year plan.
Do you want some? I'll get you...
You can just make copies and put them in my box when I need them. And I'll take you to put them in files.
Okay.
Are you doing a road grading school at this mall?
Uh, I have, I'll have to talk to LTAP. I don't think you're able to do another one in the stall, because I've been busy. Open the schedule, another couple of... But I'll be able to talk to them, have the conference. They're always gonna, that's where they'll... Talk to them.
Okay.
Oh, here's the rest one, here they're going.
Yep. What's the date?
October nineteenth to the twenty-first. Who's going to nineteen?
That's, uh, we do all the taps, all the taps from all the areas.
Very good.
Okay, so... So I guess we didn't get the twenty-four taps or anything what we had here, but it should look like a lot more than anything. I think we got more out of the place.
How much did you get here?
I heard it was on twenty-four counts.
That's a wheel back on there. What did you get?
I think about a third.
What was that?
Yeah, we got, but we sure got some of them. They said they almost didn't.
They did?
Well, we're making a lot of water.
Started raining more harder at five o'clock than...
Couldn't move back on.
That's all I have for today.
You know that? When they ran, I remember up on the twenty-one, they retracted washboard, you know? When they dragged those black tractors on it?
Oh, man, I know. It's really roughed up.
That looks like you've made it impressive.
Yeah, they ought to be coming up there today, should be up there this morning, I hope.
I don't think... I don't think it makes a...
It won't make enough, no. We'll have to run it again later when we get it back more. We gotta down some now, so we'll get it back more.
You did a good job. Much better than I ran yesterday, 'cause I couldn't see nothing. It was...
Pretty much, um, not to keep going, we got too much, but we kept going and it kinda was scared about the chrome. And then it wasn't too happy about that. So, um, but he's working on it. If we get the ground line, then it's a big ground line here next week. We'll reblade it on, keep doing how many that thing will be good for once we get to the ground line. It's still money on the side, and... Once we get to the ground line, I should get one.
If you do get along the ground line, I'll come by, twenty-four, we'll fix that follow of the bridge.
We'll be there in one day.
Dump a load in that thing.
Still rolling there, yeah. We need a motion to approve for me to go to the... We need to come to the hall, so I got program nine. Twenty-first.
Here are more motions, by example, to pay the expenses, second, by Vergel. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
You need us back?
No, I have one on the desk.
Okay, so was there the registration?
Yeah, I'll have to, I mean, do it and send it to me and the room and stuff.
All right, very good, thank you. And it's just you attending?
Yes. Yeah, once I get it on, hopefully, twenty-one and what? Thirty-one, we're gonna get that ground line here from Martin's, like I said, and most of that will be used up. We got that one, so... And hopefully we'll be over on that two, for, um, sixteen eleven. There's a little ground, there's some spot down there. I'm north, I'm twenty-fourth mile, too.
Yeah.
I don't know if I have enough...
There is this spot.
We have enough ground, but... All right, that's it. That was today.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I picked up that, um, tablet. So you guys can tell me if it's... They won't charge. Very charged. So... I got it, that's fine. Yeah.
I was just curious, circus animals. They're supposed to be, you know, under control means... Circus animal must be harmless, they need to be catered by public places. You know? Under control means that a circus animal shouldn't be allowed to bark repeatedly. If a bark, he barks once, you know? Because somebody threw that duck, barked at me, I don't know how many others.
The tongue.
Yeah.
Well, I... That's not a circus animal. That wasn't a circus animal.
Impersonating one, then, to have that...
That's what he says.
Have that jacket on.
What concerns me is rural children, how rural children are.
Won't go after them.
Yeah. You know, they don't... Yeah, you know, they don't know that.
Should have had one at least.
Just a question, uh, if he wouldn't, if he didn't have my leash, he would be, uh, just had my head. He'd know a tire bill, I didn't count myself. Sometimes comes the question, sort of, you know, leash and didn't do anything, you know. It's all kind of. Everybody, everybody. You said, or if the. I love my daughter, but she got a lesson.
Who was it?
He's from, he lives in the valley, he's, he works for pies. But, I'm not sure if it was yours. He tried to get his weed office, weed chair. And anyway, we had to keep her.
Thirty-one and that.
Two, for the.
All right, that's true. We hired two officials, um, to, to, to make it work. You don't, you don't make an appointment? You just show one?
No, usually they make an appointment.
They, they couldn't do it there. But that number, you know, if I, that guy up there, is he gonna stop in there?
The what now?
The guy, the, the guy.
We were gonna do an interview with him.
Yeah, I have.
Is that, you gonna line that up?
Yeah, I, I have, I have talked to Joe, he was gonna get back to me at one.
Okay.
Even if we would do it like, say, you know, eleven-thirty or something like that on the two.
Great, the other situation is here on the.
As soon as there's nothing new on that, um, American Recovery Act funds.
It's just so disgusting, it just, it's leaking. You know, I, I don't. So the leakin' is that they're just sending that money out and they're just sitting there.
They can do all that, no, no.
Right.
Yeah.
Not much.
Lightning fire, man. Two more pads on the lower, they have both sides blown, but, uh. Both sides, one on each, that good, dead, doing something like that, yeah. Last one, I don't know, I'll just see. We'll take that, just one. There, that guy, it says he'll start, well, he was kind of. Anybody come on the lead up there? Well, and there, pass along it. Really? Hold on, there's one, two, twelve, that was great, stocks, any credit, any yields? Exotic, on your head, so it's maybe about forty, something, more forty's. That's too bad. They, I think they had many now, but they said they had forty or. They're all over, not much. Yeah, but I think that's all kissing, one, one guy. You know, if you work the field, if someone really, then someone, you know, I don't know. I think they're all over.
You got a lot of new ones, then, two fields, is this solid?
You know, I know, they've been, I saw one field that, it had. One half of it had lots of trees. And half of it, still had, a little bit had some leaves, and then there would be some, I'm just, they're called green and grass picking up. That's back home, they, they hadn't come up at the same time, or what? Any game on that? Most of it looks pretty good. Right. What about farms? I don't know. I've seen some again, I've seen some that look really good, and I've seen some that. Just driving away, said, well, I don't even see any gears. Shortness, but it's, it's, they don't seem, they're big now, they're, it's. It's driving home pretty fast. That is something they're saying, a point one percent of, of corn, really. It's, uh, rather, shouted out in the hand, so it did, like, four, five, six, seven, eight. Good, so. I was kinda watching, like, sort of.
Is Joe's here to do the sheriff's report?
That's good.
Hi, I don't know.
I wonder if that's why he's here.
He can, he can get that?
He can come in.
Can get that, I wonder if he's gonna do the sheriff's report for us?
Oh, come on.
He isn't there, is he? Were you waiting for Ty?
I don't know.
Okay.
I didn't know if you were doing the report, or?
No, I just.
If you're gonna.
He wasn't there when I left, so I didn't know if he was already up there waiting on the.
Oh, okay.
I'm gonna keep reacting, busting up there, everyone's like, moving on, I was off a little bit. Today.
Good.
I have an extra one for Don.
Yeah. Ready, ten dollars.
Sixty-nine?
Yeah. Sixty-nine today, as of this morning.
Wow, eighty-one?
Yeah, pretty cool.
Thanks.
Seventy-eight, that's good.
But he was seventy?
Seventy, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, that's getting.
That's above our capacity.
Yes.
Normal, pretty impressive. Great, we're seventy-four, but.
Eighty-one now, one day, huh?
Mm-hmm. Maybe it's already, it's, it's litter.
Just, just hand us a motion.
Write this phone number down, please. Do you know such a thing? All right.
You had, had to draw it, oh, all right.
Should wait, or get started? Okay. All right, uh, as of this morning, we're approximately sixty-nine inmates. Um, you can see we were working up and above our usual for the last few days here. For the last, yeah, for the last week. That's kind of the new, that's kind of the new normal for us. I mean, I don't know, I, I don't know what the, it's not really an answer to that, people are committing crimes. The, the deputy staff over the weekend, we're given the directive to, to focus on our regular duties beyond just patrol duties, to try to limit the monitor us that we were bringing in. But you can see that didn't, that didn't help much.
So it's, it's deputies, or city police, or?
It's, it's.
Combination?
City police, it's highway patrol, like highway patrol brought in three or four over the weekend. City PD brought in at least three over the weekend. Marshals brought a few more last week. So. So yes, our day, our daily count this morning is sixty-nine, today is, today is court day, so it will, it will drop a little bit after today. We've, we've made a few, we've made a few changes with our twenty-four-seven program. After talking to the clerks, or how we had been doing some things as far as people that are out on bond, coming in to do check-ins that are under the influence of alcohol and things like that. We were doing. And this wasn't something that I started, but the first time with a warning, the second time they had to sit two days, or sit at twenty-four hours, and then just sit forty-eight hours. Well, after an incident that occurred, well, somebody was out on a, out on a bond, um, a week ago, that led to three children being in the car, and being a six-day-old having two broken ankles, and, uh, because they were on floorboards at the car. It's just not, I don't feel like it's in anybody's best interest. Somebody's given a bond, um, to not drink, and there's checking, and they're supposed to be checking in in the morning and night, and they come in and they've been drinking. I don't think it's in our best interest to let them walk back and get inside of the vehicle and drive away. So, you know, that, that'll create a little bit of a change, but, you know, we've made some changes with check-in times, being a little bit more structured with our check-in times, to make it easier on our staff. And ninety-nine percent of the people coming in to do their check-ins have been able to comply just fine with, with those times. They're, they're set, that's what they've always been, we've just been a little bit more slack in the past. A little more accommodated through the work schedules, but I was like, work's handled, they're gonna, that's, keep coming up there in these times. You said, yeah. So at a certain time, most of them, like you said, most of them been coming up.
So the policy is now, you come in, there is no warrant anymore?
So if they, if they come in and they, they blow, um, numbers or blow hot, we call it, on a P V T, we give fifteen minutes. So they get fifteen minutes to, to wait and see if that bring them below zero, which that is the twenty-four-seven program policy, not our policy, twenty-four-seven program policy. But if they still have low numbers after that, they're in direct violation of the bond set by the court. So, I think it's in our best interest that they.
They, they shouldn't be having, they should not have.
So we changed, we changed that, and when I talked to the, the clerk's office about that, it's something that they kind of said, yeah, we're aware that that's what they were doing, we didn't really agree with it, but it wasn't really our place, so. I think it was a good, a good change for us, because god forbid somebody gets in a car after just, we just sent them out after they'd been drinking and then something happens. Even if, even if their P V T was below the legal limit to drive a vehicle, but we let them out, let them go do that. I don't want us all accountable for that.
Tyler, do the ankle bracelets detect alcohol consumption, or what, what's their purpose?
The SCRAM bracelets, uh, do, um, detect alcohol, alcohol usage through the skin. I, it doesn't, the only thing I believe that it, that it detects is basically a yes or no. Is it, so, does this person? If, if. The sweat, if the sweat moves skin, it'll detect alcohol and that. And it'll record if used or not, and they come to download, come download the bracelet. I'm not sure if it gives off a report right then. I don't, it communicates, it'll, it'll download in the computer, and a twenty percent coordinator will be able to view the report. At that time or later time, to determine if they've used, if they've determined if they've used the official warrant.
Have you posted this new policy?
Yes. It's, it's in the, the column ago. And we handed out, we handed out little sheets every time it came in this.
Okay, so they forfeit your bond also, right?
And they know that.
Maybe we hit them in the pocket, or it hurts.
But half the time, it makes it, it makes it a lot easier for us to, if, if we have to staff that window for an hour and a half versus to staff it for an hour and a half, and then, off every twenty minutes, like after that, somebody comes in, and then they're calling for a jailer to come up from the back, taking them away from circuit trays, or dealing with somebody's, whatever issue they might be dealing with, just may take a lot more smooth for us. And a lot easier for us to staff that. Um, and that is, that is something that we're working on as well. You know, you mentioned the SCRAM bracelets, um, looking long-term, if our jail numbers are gonna stay in the same trajectory that they're staying, what kind of options that we might have for, um, extended confinement, so to speak. You know, what kind of options we could provide our court service officers and those kind of things, as far as ankle monitoring and those kind of deal. I know there's, I know there's some programs out there, and grant funding out there for those kinds of, those kinds of opportunities. So we're, we're kind of looking into that, and I'll get back to you at some point with what, what it might be able to provide for us. Typically, what it would provide is, is if, what we could use it for is, if, it would be in a person's best interest to still be out and going to work. You can still allow them to do that if they're willing to pay the, the fee for the extended confinement bracelet. So we would look at some, some sort of options like that. And then we're dealing with less people inside of our jail potentially.
How much has that contributed to your increase in census, where a person comes in, goes hot?
Uh, we had, we had maybe one or two over the weekend.
Oh, so it's not a?
No.
Okay.
No. And the word travel pretty fast, as far as the, you know, if you're late for the, late for the check-in, you're going in, getting booked in. So if you, unless you call in for the timeframe, so it's six to eight-thirty, A M, B M, that they're supposed to show up. If they have an extenuating circumstance, if they call in and say, hey, this happened, I'll be a little, I'll be by this time. We'll allow it, but it has to be for something, a good reason, I just call up this, I just left, or whatever. I'm, you know, it's gotta be something that's unavoidable. And, and as close to the timeframe, that time period as possible, if they get there. So I did, I, we do know stuff does come up, not expect to leave, so we're not gonna, I'm not gonna hold back against them. But I want there as quick as I can, but there, within that six to eight-thirty timeframe. And if they, you know, on that notice that's out there, says that you, if you fail to show up at all.
Yeah.
They'll be in a warrant for that. If you're, if you, if you're late, you run the risk of being booked in, or just being late the next, the day. So, so as we put that out, we made, I made a factor for the next week, and during that, that, starting that next week, people are showing up in that timeframe. We had like ten people waiting on the lobby one day. I was like, you know, it's a little hectic, but it works, so.
We never get a report on this, but there's been an issue in the past, you know, state auditor has clipped us on it. People paying, paid up, or do we need to?
It's, it's something that we're, that I'm, I've been kind of working with Mark, with the same system that they use for, uh, running cards and things like that. Trying to look at something that we can maybe use there, um, so that that becomes less of an issue and less of us dealing with cash. You know, between UAs and, and P V T tubes that they have to pay for every day, it'd be a lot easier for them to, to just, you know, whether it's a card or whatever, it's like. whether it's a card or whatever, to slide that through, and, you know. Because it, it does become time-consuming, because every time, you know, somebody comes in for a check-in, if they have to pay two-fifty, well, now we're receiving in the two-fifty, and, you know, the next person in line is waiting, and, you know, if you have ten, fifteen people waiting in line, it would be easy for someone to get skipped, and now we've missed a receipt or missed a payment. It'd be a lot easier for us to maybe do some sort of payment system on a, on a card system, if we create something like that. So I am, I, I've been working with Mark over there on the same program that the Treasury Office uses. And I'm just trying to coordinate how we, if there's a way of putting them into two separate accounts possibly, instead of just one. So I think, it wasn't for, if we're able to set those, all those fees, that it would be using that.
Can you use a lot?
Yeah.
That's a twenty-four-seven?
Yeah, that might be an option, too. And then Janessa Miller had requested that we give her a call today regarding church benefits. So that may be something for executive session.
Motion for executive session to discuss personnel. Is there a second? Johnson, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries.
She gave yourself one, she said that would be the best of.